Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the work session on November 18, 2025 to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for purposes of rebroadcasting. Every board member is in attendance here. Ms. Steele has just stepped away for the moment. So we are going to move on to recognition and guest speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a couple scheduled speakers. It gives me great pleasure to welcome Brandon Raquette and James Lentz. Brandon is with the Worcester Fire Department and James is with the Lower Providence Fire Department. They're here this evening to present the property tax credit for volunteer first responders. We would ask that we get the presentation up on the screen. And not only are they serving to protect the citizens of Lower Providence and Worcester Township, but they're also proud alumni of Methacton School District. So let's welcome Brandon and James.
All right. Good evening. My name is Brandon Raquette. I'm the Assistant Chief of the Worcester Volunteer Fire Department. With me, I have Jim Lentz, who's the Chief of the Lower Providence Fire Department. And tonight, we're here to talk to you about potential property tax rebate for qualified volunteers that are serving the Methacton School District community. So a quick what and why. So what we're here to do tonight is talk about potentially following other school districts and providing property tax rebates for residents that live in Methacton School District and are qualified volunteer firefighters that meet a certain threshold for activity. And the why is really, we're trying to create a substantial tax relief package to be able to retain our qualified first responders within our community by addressing retention issues often associated with cost of living barriers. And I'll get into some numbers specific to our departments about that in the next couple of slides. But overall, in 1970, Pennsylvania had 300,000 volunteer firefighters. Today, that number is down to 38,000. Both our departments still remain in fairly good shape, membership-wise, because we are aggressively recruiting and retaining through every avenue that we can and providing all the tools necessary to still enable our volunteers to be successful and active. But with a growing call volume in both municipalities, growing training requirements, it's becoming increasingly difficult. And we feel that by increasing a tax relief package, it could help in a number of ways. So, school districts around us in Montgomery County that are adopting similar proposals, North Penn, Springfield Township, and Hattler Horsham are all looking at various programs or have passed programs for property tax credits for qualified first responders. I'm actually, this is slide five and slide six. I'm actually going to come back to their slide four and slide five. I'm going to come back to these and lead us right into the actual proposal. And then we'll dive into the numbers, some of what the Finance Committee requested after our meeting. So I'm going to go right to the problem statement, which kind of reiterates what I just talked about. Historically, both organizations face challenges when it comes to keeping volunteers long-term due to cost of living. And both organizations really must find ways to bolster their active membership, who are actually homeowners within the school district in order to limit personnel turnover. So, in both organizations, we have vibrant junior firefighter programs. We have folks, maybe they're out of college or they're in college in our tech school, they join the fire department. We spend a lot of time and money in training them up, but we struggle to retain those folks because they can't afford to actually live here. And that's really what we're trying to get to the bottom of is how can we make it more affordable for these folks that are putting in the time at the top of our levels of activity and enabling them to afford homeownership in Methacton School District? So our proposal would be to provide qualifying first responders in both organizations with a tax rebate that follows a similar structure to a county program that was rolled out in 2024, and it's capped at $1,000. Again, we believe that this would make a sizable tax relief package, paired together with ongoing county as well as EIT rebate programs for these homeowners or hopeful homeowners in the district. To give you some numbers about some of the trends we're trying to address, under the 2024 county program, 55 volunteers between both organizations qualified for the county property tax rebate. Of those 55, 16 of them actually are not residents of the school district. So they still remain active with both organizations, but they don't actually live in Methacton School District. And a big chunk of those are folks that started out in the community, probably were Methacton students. They started with one of these organizations and they continue to serve, but their capacity is quite limited, given they weren't able to afford to live here. They moved outside the district. We're really thankful that they remain active with us, but emergencies, we need people there quickly. So if you're responding from municipality or two away, that definitely limits your impactfulness. Diving into the numbers a little further, in 2024, out of 45 members in the WVFD who achieved active status as defined by the agency, just 23 of them are actually homeowners within the township. Looking at Lower Providence, out of the 20 members that achieved active status with that organization, just seven are homeowners within Lower Providence Township. Again, some data points that we just want to reemphasize, that's sort of the trend that we're hoping to reverse. And we can talk about cost of the program in a little bit. We actually have a little more of a detailed slide to break that down. So administration of how this would work, this was another outcome of our Finance Committee discussion. So essentially, each organization, if this were to be passed, would submit a list by the fire chief of who's qualifying for the rebate. So the chart that you're looking at right here shows current 2025 data to kind of give you a projection of where we could be headed. The Lower Providence numbers, based on how they run their activity year, are actually final because they run a, is it October to October? So their numbers are final, whereas Worcester, we track our, just on a calendar year. So we're just giving projections of where our members sit currently. So how the program is as proposed is that we would have three tiers, 1,000, 750, and 250. Now you'll notice that in this proposal, the percentages are different for Worcester and Lower Providence. Lower Providence, as you can see, runs more calls, so we wanted to try to make it fair and not try to hold both organizations to the same level. So that is why you'll see a little bit of a discrepancy there. I have also included, just for awareness, I had in Worcester, two members that were within 5% of qualifying for the lowest bracket, if it were passed. So overall, it's looking like it would be projected around 27,000 in tax rebates for volunteers in both organizations. So now I want to talk about the tax relief that the volunteers provide Methacton School District taxpayers annually. So right now, both organizations receive about a combined $1 million from their respective municipalities. Lower Providence is about 70% of that, Worcester's about 30% of that. When we're looking at what's happening around us, Upper Providence Township and Montgomery Township, both townships are either exploring or have proceeded with hiring full-time, around-the-clock paid firefighters. So an Upper Providence Township, just to staff one fire engine with a crew 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they're paying about $3 million. That does not include any operating or capital costs, gear, fire trucks, keeping the lights on at the station, any of that. For Montgomery Township, they're currently evaluating a proposal to hire 19 full-time firefighters costing approximately $4 million. So now I'm going to go back and kind of talk about how we, as organizations, are structured to be able to provide these services and the man-hours that goes into it. So I'm going to go to the volunteer hours at slide four. So, right now, as it projected from January 1st to November 1st, between responding to incidents within the district as well as our drill man-hours, which is solely, each organization has a weekly drill night that they attend to, we're about at 10,000 man-hours between both organizations. I will say that that does not include folks going down to the fire academy to getting individual certifications, which is 50, 60, 200 hours at a clip. That does not include the immense administrative paperwork that we have to do on a daily basis. That does not include fundraising, fire prevention. So without being certain, I would be very, I would be very clear to say that that number, you would probably take 50 to 75% higher in the actual man-hours that it takes to provide volunteer fire and rescue services adequately to the two municipalities in the school district. I also provided some examples of folks that you might see in our organizations that are operating as volunteer first responders, whether as an apparatus driver, firefighter, or fire police officer, to try to give you an idea of how many hours it takes just to achieve that minimum level of certification. Next, I want to talk about our junior firefighters. Between both organizations, there are 16 junior firefighters that participate in the junior firefighter program. And I think that's why that's important, and we'll definitely touch on that at the end of the presentation, is most of these are Methacton students. And there's a lot of benefits for our students through these programs. So I kind of wanted to paint a picture of how much time they're putting into their communities and what they're getting out of. So right now, both about, both organizations, their juniors are averaging about 33 training hours so far this year. And then you can see the number of calls. The number of calls is a little trickier with the junior firefighters for a number of reasons. Right now, Lower Providence, a lot of their junior firefighters graduate to full-time firefighter status. So the seven that they do have are much younger and not really able to run calls right now. I know I could speak for my nine. I have a lot of new juniors. And then I had two juniors that are each probably close to 100 calls. So it is a different range, but we're, both organizations have thriving junior programs. And I think that's really the basis of what we're going to come here today to talk about our value to the school district. Okay, I am now going to move to slide nine. So obviously, you guys get a lot of requests. You know, you have a fairly big budget to manage. And you're thinking, okay, well, you know, why does this come down to the school district? Why is this not a municipality problem? There's an immense benefit that thriving volunteer organizations, fire department organizations have to this school district outside of just providing adequate fire and rescue services. We have a proven track record of providing a great extracurricular activity for Methacton students. So I graduated here in 2014. I started as a junior firefighter when I was a freshman. I can tell you that the five highest-ranking officers in the Worcester Volunteer Fire Department, all were Methacton students, all started as junior firefighters. I think that the school district does a great job with providing extracurriculars, clubs, athletics. But for me, I didn't fit into any of those. I joined the fire department. And I still got a great resume builder, learned a lot of skills, did a lot of networking that you would want to have the students gain in some of these clubs or activities that the school district has. We have vibrant memberships in both departments that provide diverse professional backgrounds for students to network with. So one of the examples that I like to give, and I gave to the Finance Committee, was one of our junior firefighters that graduated last year, he was working at Mary Mead. One of our members runs a full-time HVAC company. He said, why don't you come work for me? He started to work for him. He changes, he actually ended up changing his career path at the technical school. He took up HVAC, loved it. As soon as graduation, as soon as he graduated, he already had a full-time job. And he set the ground running. We have plenty of other examples where we have a lot of people in different corporate tracks, whether you're in healthcare or financials. And we've had a lot of our junior firefighters, students here at Methacton, that were able to take advantage of internship programs because of that strong network that we're able to provide. We're able to provide engaging community events and fire prevention demonstrations for Methacton School District students and their families. So I know just this year, Worcester and Lower Providence did fire prevention activities at Worcester Elementary in Arrowhead. I know at Worcester, we also partnered with Worcester Home and School. So every year, we host a trunk-or-treat with their home and school to get the school, the students and their families to come out. But we also capitalize on that and use it as a fire prevention event. So they go through a number of fire prevention lessons. We give a number of handouts. And it's a great community event. The last thing on this slide that I really want to talk about, that's sort of new, under the direction of Chief Lentz's leadership this year, is that we're excited that students in the tech program, under the Protective Services Program, have an opportunity to now enroll in that program and graduate with their firefighter one certification, their EMT certification, and certificates that will enable them to apply for jobs if they choose at our emergency dispatch center at Montgomery County. This is a huge shift from what they were originally able to achieve. And this makes them great candidates as soon as they graduate for a various, a number of jobs in the emergency services career path upon graduation. And so our value here is that really, that program cannot succeed if they do not have strong volunteer fire departments that are backing them, because ultimately, we're the ones that have to sponsor them. They're going to their class, but they need strong leadership to be able to walk them through the class. And I think any educator would appreciate that. You know, right now, we have 17 junior firefighters. Takes a little bit of administration and hand-holding to get 17 high school students through activities like that. But you know, with strong memberships in both organizations, I feel very confident that this will actually be a game changer to kind of reverse the trend of our recruitment issues and really enable students to not only help their local communities, but also get a stronghold in an actual well-paying career path. Finally, I'm just going to wrap up with the number of events that we support. I'm just, you know, for the ones that you might know, this is the ones that you don't know. Both departments are heavily engaged in a number of activities throughout the year that we support. And again, I feel that as we continue and we're able to maintain strong memberships with both departments, we'll hopefully be able to also support a number of events like these where I think has an immense benefit to our students. So that's the presentation. Chief Lentz and I are happy to take any questions.
Brandon and James, thank you both very much for the presentation this evening. Members of the board, are there any comments or questions to my right, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, Dr. Zerbi, can you clarify, you know, if this is something that we would take forward to the full board for voting? Is that for next week, or when would, is the timing be on this?
I think, you know, the board can determine how they want to have that, have something like this enter the consideration for a vote. Certainly, at the very least, you would want to approve this prior to final approval of the 26, 27 budget, which might be somewhere closer to April or May prior to that timeframe. But you certainly could approve it at any time before that, if you so choose to.
So I appreciate you did some, from the Finance Committee, one quick question. You have the Hattler Horsham on slide three matches whatever amount is provided to the county rebate. So that means if you have a $50 bill with Monco, you're getting $50 from Hattler Horsham School District.
Correct.
Okay. And then North Penn was straight up the school district. And you have Springfield Township, is that Springfield School District or Springfield Township? Do you know?
It's Springfield School District.
Okay, all right. I would suggest to the board, it's something to consider. I spoke at the Finance Committee meeting in complete support for the fire company and going to look like an ogre with the questions that I, that I asked at the Finance Committee. But it's really comes down to the concept of this has been put on the school districts as not necessarily a school district problem. And I understand the individual taxpayer sees it as one tax bill coming from the school district or Lower Providence and/or, I'm sorry, and one of the townships. But to me, this is a primarily a township thing, so it is something I think we could consider. We do provide earned income up to $500, I believe, which follows a program for residents that belong, that are paying earned income in Lower Providence or Worcester as well. But it, very early in the budget cycle, and you know, ideally, we could fit that in, if that's the will of the board. But I would suggest not committing ourselves to this at this point and waiting until how the budget flushes out throughout the cycle would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any other comments or questions, Mr. Mersky?
So have you taken this request to the townships?
The townships are aware that we are here, but we have not taken it directly.
No, I misunderstood my question. Have you asked the, a similar ask from the townships for tax relief?
To provide. So we did not. And the reason for that is, so in Worcester Township, and that's one of the examples I gave for the Finance Committee, I'm a resident, I pay $17 in property tax. So it's just, I don't think the juice would be worth the squeeze. And obviously, you know, I acknowledge that Mr. Winters' comments about the municipality. But just how that our tax structure works, that's what leads us here today.
But you also haven't approached Lower Providence either, well, you answered the question.
Thank you for your inquiry. Lower Providence Township currently funds Lower Providence Fire Department in excess of about three-quarters of a million dollars a year. That money goes towards operations, capital investments, as well as incentives to the volunteers. And approximately, right now, I think we're funded at about $440,000 a year towards incentives. And primarily, what we're trying to accomplish is to do everything we can to incentivize our volunteers to remain active in our communities, to reduce the potential burden it would have on our taxpayers. That would be quite honestly miraculous if we had to shift gears.
Any comments?
My initial hesitation is exactly what Paul expressed on, is this the appropriate place to help subsidize the, you know, like subsidize the volunteer fire department? I know, it's a very good presentation, and then I don't think anyone questions the value that the, both departments bring to the community. It's really, if we want to try to subsidize through the school district's budget. But we would be considering this for next fiscal year, correct? That's, this is not...
I'd be corrected. It'd be for the 26, 27 budget year.
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments to my right? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, thanks so much for the changes to the presentation. I think, I know we talked about it at the Finance Committee meeting. And I hear the comments, I do, but I also recognize that it's really important that we keep volunteers and our volunteer firefighters. And without them, we will, the taxpayers will have an additional burden. There's no question about that. I get that it's not really a school district responsibility to fund those programs, but I'm not sure where else you guys can go. So I think the board needs to decide if, when we're funding, when we're going to tax our residents, are we taxing them to support the entire programs that are available to our residents? And are we valuing the programming that you're providing back to the district? And I think the list of information and things that you guys have been doing for us as a district was really helpful to me tonight. So I want to just appreciate that you put that in writing for us. And I guess the other, the other question I have is, you mentioned that there's other incentives that you provide to your volunteers. Can you tell us a little bit more about those incentives?
Lower Providence is a lot different than Worcester. Substantially, they have substantially more, just because of the call volume. They need to have a little bit of a different delivery model than, than we do. So at Worcester, on top of the tax rebates in the county, we do have a small stipend program, but max you can make 550 bucks a year. We also have programs to do mileage reimbursement because it's through the IRS tax rate. So it's not something that would cause them to be 1099. We've set up programs through, T-Mobile actually offers first responders free cell phone service. So we've set those programs up, so we have, you know, we've cobbled together a couple of different programs. But it's, you know, much different in Lower Providence.
Thank you. So this calendar year, Lower Providence Fire Department is poised to handle approximately 850 responses, which is an uptick from last year remarkably. On top of that, in our own community, about 150, 200 responses are outside of our community in the Worcester Township and the surrounding communities. We provide multiple tiers of incentives. There's, there's three different programs. One is a pay-per-call program, one is a come-from-home program, one is an in-station program. And we also have gift incentive programs. And they're funded by the Lower Providence Fire Department as well as Lower Providence Township. So firefighters have opportunities to receive funds for, they're dropping what they're doing and come into the fire station for an emergency. They have received incentive funds for committing themselves to be available from wherever they might be, as long as they're within a short distance to the fire station. And we also have incentive programs that are a little bit more, that compensate them to be in the fire station for upwards of 12 to 24 hours at a time for immediate response, which is part of our delivery model change from where it used to be, from a typical come-from-home volunteer fire company model. Because of the density and the traffic, the, the population, and just generally how busy Lower Providence Township is, we recognize those needs to change. So while we have the funding in place to incentivize the firefighters that are in the station, what we're really pushing for is that second apparatus, that second group of people, to make sure that first crew has backup and to cover second and third and fourth calls. I think on Saturday alone, we handled nine responses in Lower Providence Township with 100% volunteer response. Does that answer your question?
It does. It does. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions to my right, Ms. Cancro?
Thank you very much for this presentation. I agree with Ms. Graff. Like I think, you know, firefighters are a critical part for us to function as a community to be safe. And the school district is a part of both those communities. And it's a little incentive for as much as you do. The fact that you've got so much involvement with our students to help them develop and grow is phenomenal. And I think these community events that you do independently... And I think these community events that you do independently and come and really become a group with all of us, I think is just unique in itself. So, I mean, I do think that we should consider it because it is, you know, I understand it's part of the budget, but looking at January, when you look at your initial budget, and then take into consideration that in February. So I'd be in favor on moving it to do a decision in February. But, you know, I would be for this. So thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate all that you do for the community.
Thank you.
Ms. Perdue?
Same here. I just want to say thank you both for coming. I know you've come in the past to present to the board. I think you guys always do a great job. I appreciate the programs that you do in our community and also involving our students. And I know I had a student that went through the program and gave him a lot to talk about when applying to colleges and writing those applications and showing volunteer in the community and just showing how they participate in making their community better. So I appreciate it. And I appreciate the information provided in partnership with North Monco also, just because, or Monco, I think, just because many of our students, it gives them another opportunity as certificate program. I do agree and I appreciate Mr. Winters for asking in reference to maybe more of the what's next for the board. In looking at it, I agree, it's probably early in the budget season, but I think it's right, it's timely to have this initial proposal presented to the board and something that we can consider when the budget time comes, whether it's the will of the board to move forward. Maybe we do a little bit work in looking at the other districts, just because I know, based on the numbers you've provided, it seemed like some are matching whatever the county rebated and some is set by it. So maybe if there's something that we need to look at further, as far as the amount requested, but.
Yeah, I can actually speak to that. It was a comment that we made in the Finance Committee. So the way that we have the program laid out is a little different than these three school districts up here. All the school districts are following the point system that the county rebate program follows. We are deciding not to follow that and make the regulations for our program a lot more stringent. The county program is great, but you have to keep in mind the county program has to accompany departments that are in Sheltonham all the way up to East Greenville. So that is a big change of how departments operate, their call volume, what type of activities they engage in. So the county program is fairly loose, and I would say people definitely have to put the time in, but it's fairly easy to get to that 100%. We're not intending to make it necessarily easy to qualify, to get it 100% here. So again, we're, I just want to be clear, we can definitely dive in and get more information on the programs, but again, they're following the county point system, and the point system that we have laid out would be a lot more stringent.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Other questions to my left, Ms. Chandra?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for this presentation. Speaking for myself, I think when I have called the fire department, I didn't think twice about, are they going to show up? Is anyone even on call right now? And growing up, my parents' neighbor is a Worcester volunteer. Currently, my neighbor is a Lower Providence volunteer, and I know how much time they sacrifice and how much their families sacrifice, so I really appreciate this. And I would be in favor of considering it moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Steele?
No real questions because a lot have been asked already. I just, I also wanted to follow up and say thank you for your service to the community, for the opportunities you provide our students. The Lower Providence Fire Department had to come to my house two years ago, and I wasn't there, but I saw it all on my Ring camera, and I believe, Chief Lenz, you were one of them. And so thank you for that two years later. But in all seriousness, I do appreciate everything you do for our community, and I look forward to the conversation. I know that the budget conversations just started, but I would absolutely be in favor when we do decide to discuss it further. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Alston?
Just, I'll just sum up with another thank you. And thank you for bringing this, this again, with the more detailed information that we requested from the Finance Committee. And I guess, I guess what I'm hearing from the board, it sounds like we're looking at to keep this on as a discussion for, once we take, you know, look at our budget in the future months. But I appreciate you coming in and for all you do for the community.
Thank you. We appreciate the time.
Are there any further comments, Mr. Winters?
To summarize the summary, I suggest then we just wait and schedule this for, and I don't know about February then, but in April, where we know where we're at the preliminary, we're voting on the final budget for the first time probably in April before the, or May. In April, put a vote in and ask Ms. Steffi to put in 27,000 or something as an estimate at this point, or whatever the, you guys recommend for the, and show that in the budget process.
Yeah, we, as part of the discussion at Finance Committee this month, we did recommend that we would put it in the budget as a, as a start of the process for the proposed preliminary budget. And therefore, we can certainly, you know, pull that out at any time if the board so chooses to. So if it is, you know, there's no objection to that, we will revisit the matter as part of the budgetary process beginning in January when we meet with the Finance Committee and use the Finance Committee as a guide to get us to a full board vote in the future, if that's, if that's the will. Okay? Thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you so much for your service to our community, and thank you for the presentation this evening.
I'd just like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Zerby and staff for his consideration, your consideration, the Methacan School Board for your consideration. And I'd also like to acknowledge the amazing partnership that's been built between the fire departments and the school district the last four or five years. It's been fantastic. We're looking forward to the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President, we have two other presentations here this evening. We have graduation requirements for the class of 2030. Dr. Gorla, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, is here this evening to go over that. You should have a handout in your packet, and we'll be presenting some information up on the screen. If I understand correctly, Dr. Gorla, this was presented previously at the Education Committee of the Board, and please.
Thanks for having me this evening. I'm here to talk with you a little bit about proposed graduation requirements for the class of 2030. As Dr. Zerby indicated, we have talked about this at Education Committee. This is directly correlated to Act 35 of 2023, which requires a half-credit standalone course to be implemented in 2627 for personal finance, or as we like to call it adulting at Education Committee. It is a graduation requirement. It cannot be integrated into a course like social studies or something else. It has to be personal finance. We are utilizing Example D in the PDE Toolkit for this, for implementation, looking to have our personal finance course in grades, available in grades nine, 10, 11, or 12, effective with the class of 2030. So students graduating before this can also, of course, take advantage of this course. We are fortunate in Methacan, we already have an existing course called Advanced Personal Finance. That is a half-credit course. That is the course that we are using to meet the new standards for personal finance. So we are actively revising that course to ensure that it aligns with those standards. So you'll see the comparison within the chart gives the graduation requirements for the classes of 27, 28, and 29 at 23 and a half credits, and then the class of 2030 at 24.25. We looked at this and we added in personal finance as the standalone credit, but if you look at the requirements that exist right now, we have a .25 credit requirement in FCS, Family Consumer Science slash Finance. So it's kind of a bucket of a spot for where students could choose. What we opted to do is we discussed this in committee. We, I met with our department coordinators for counseling, for business services, our high school principal, and we looked at, well, let's look at our credits and our credit alignment. And we shifted and added a half a credit to Arts and Humanities, which is actually where FCS falls. So FCS is under our Arts and Humanities, so we've shifted that into there. The majority of our courses in FCS are actually half-credit courses. So that is where we are at. What we will be doing is developing a communication plan for this upon approval that will, of course, be involving our Program Planning Guide, but also extensive information for our eighth grade families, so that as they start the course scheduling process, they're aware of the expectations for their students as they move through Methacan High School. And that concludes my information for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Gorla. Are there any questions for Dr. Gorla, for members to my left? Ms. Alston?
Yeah, thank you. Just to clarify, so this doesn't, you're moving FCS, you're eliminating that as its standalone topic and just moving it under Arts. It doesn't affect the amount or the kinds of FCS that we're currently offering?
No, the only course that we'll be modifying is the Consumer Finance course currently offered through FCS, because that is a quarter credit class. That would no longer fulfill the personal finance credit requirement, so, because it has to be.
So that's morphing, and that's being eliminated, replaced with the one that does fulfill the requirement, but the other FCS stay.
All of those courses, all of those courses options.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to my left? Seeing none to my right, any questions? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood. When I look at the chart at the bottom here, personal finance, which is equivalent to the FCS finance, went from a quarter credit requirement to a half credit.
Correct.
But then down at the bottom, Arts and Humanities went from a two to a 2.5.
Yes, that had, that existing quarter credit, we shifted to a half credit and added it to Arts and Humanities. The bulk of our classes in FCS are half-credit classes. The only quarter credit class that exists is Consumer Science. So as we discussed in a community, as a group, we opted to increase Arts and Humanities to two and a half credits. And there are a number of options. If you look at your second on the reverse of this sheet, there's a number of departments that fit in Arts and Humanities, that students will have the option to be able to build their credits from.
So just to make sure I understand, we moved what was FCS into Arts and Humanities, and then added an additional .25 credit requirement, and then made a new category of personal finance at half a credit.
Correct.
So I guess my question to you is, is the FCS finance quarter credit a state requirement?
It is not.
So it's a district requirement that's been in place for a long time?
Yes.
So we kept it. And then moving it from a half, a quarter credit up to a half credit, that decision was because?
We looked at the courses that we offer, and we wanted to ensure that we had offerings that matched, so that was, that was our thought process.
And remind me again, how do volunteer hours work?
There are, there's, and I don't have the PPG up in front of me, but students may earn credits for their volunteer hours as well.
And do they go into electives?
Reportedly, they're electives.
Okay. I just didn't know if they could fall into the Arts and Humanities, or if they were electives only. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Gorla? Mr. Mersky?
Simple one. So this is proposed to take effect for a graduating class of 2030.
Yes.
Right? I think it says that on the chart, but I wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other final questions for Dr. Gorla? Seeing none, Dr. Gorla, thank you so much for your time this evening, as well as thank you for putting this all together for us. Next on the agenda, we have the projected tax impact as part of the Finance Committee this month. Ms. Steffi, our Director of Business Services, presented a tax impact based on the borrowing. She's here this evening to share that same presentation with the, with the board, and you should have a copy of this handout in front of you. Ms. Steffi?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. I would like to first start by providing some context around the tax impact of the 10-year borrowing scenario. The first slide, which was presented last month at the Finance Committee, shows the projected payments associated with $180 million borrowing over 10 years. The second slide, also shared last month, is simply a close-up of the first 10 years. Those slides are included here to help frame the information on Slide 3. One point I'd like to highlight on this slide is that it's not uncommon to borrow funds without having a payment due in that same fiscal year. For example, in the current year's borrowing, no payment appears in this year's budget. Sometimes this is due to the timing of the borrowing. Other times, such as with the projected $25 million borrowing in October of 2031, payments do not begin for two years. In that case, the delay is a result of debt wrapping. These charts illustrate what future debt payment could look like. Actual borrowing dates, amounts, and annual payments will change once the debt is issued. The third slide shows the projected tax impact of the borrowing plan. The median residential assessment in Methacan is $176,920. A home assessed at that value would see a school real estate tax bill of $6,541 for the 2627 school year, an increase of $221 over the current year. Assuming taxes are raised to the Act 1 index of 3.5%, of that $221 increase, $92 is attributable to higher debt service costs. For 202728, with a projected Act 1 index of 3.4%, the tax increase for that same homeowner would be $222. Although borrowing is projected during that year, there is no increase in debt service due to a combination of debt wrapping and older debt rolling off. In 202829, with a projected increase of 3.2%, the expected tax increase is $216. Again, none of this increase is attributable to debt service, as no new debt services added that year. In 2930, the projected tax increase is $223, with $64 tied to an estimated $992,000 increase in debt service. In the following year, a $231 increase is projected, of which $58 relates to an $890,000 rise in debt service. Not shown on this slide is the information for the current year. Based on the median assessed value, the 2526 tax bill would have increased by $269, with $64 of that increase attributable to the increase in debt service. The chart below summarizes the information I've reviewed. The large number at the center represents the projected real estate tax bill. The smaller black number shows the total tax increase, assuming increases to the Tax 1 index, Act 1 index. The green figure represents the portion of that increase attributable specifically to higher debt service. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Are there questions from members of the board to my right? Ms. Graff?
Thank you for this. I just had a question related to the assessed value. So can you just explain what the assessed value actually is? Because it's not actually the price you would pay for a home. It's based on a tax.
Correct. So what I use, I'll explain what I use here, which is the median assessed value. So if you were to take every residential property in Methacan School District and sort them high to low, the median is the number exactly in the middle. And that's typically used rather than the average, because the average would, it's more stable, because when you're using an average, you're going to have outliers that could really throw off that assessment amount. And then I think to answer your other question, the assessed value is the assessed value in the year 1996. So typically, a home with that assessed value, $176,000, is, we use a multiplier of about three, so the home value is actually closer to $540,000.
Okay. So essentially, if I had to sort of put this in non-financial expert terms, I would say for a house that runs approximately $540,000, they're paying taxes of 6541.
Correct.
And through the period that we're looking at, those taxes would climb to 7434.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cleary?
Not a question, but a comment. So when, when you do these presentations, it is, these numbers on, on the graphs on Slides 2 and 3, even with my readers, I can't see them. So I'm just going to request that you guys look at a way to make this bigger, remove the graphics. I don't care what we do, because the graphics don't matter, the numbers matter. It was very hard for me to sort of follow along without, because I couldn't see it.
Understood.
Yeah, Ms. Cleary, I think your point well taken. What we can do is certainly include the reports in its, in its true format as an appendix to these, and that way you can reference those in the future. Thank you for that feedback. Any other comments from, to my right, to my left, Ms. Kankrow?
I actually would like what Ms. Graff said about the 540,000, because if someone's seeing this, they might be like, oh my, they might not realize that. So I would add that. But I do like this visual, so it does give someone an awareness of what could be happening in these next few years for them. So thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments to my left? Seeing none, Ms. Steffi, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. Madam President, that ends our guests and scheduled speakers for this evening. Next week, we have the Spirit of Methacton Award with Warsester Elementary School. And we have the Schrader Group and ICS coming to provide a brief update on the schematic design. And then we certainly will have a recognition of an outgoing board of schools back there. But before I do that, if, if I could have your permission to read an executive session announcement.
Yeah.
There was an executive session of the board held virtually on November 10 for matters associated with the collective bargaining with the Methacton Education Association. And, and then we will go into reports next week. We will then go into advisements, and then we'll public comment minutes. And then we go into fiscal items. Ms. Steffi?
Sure. There are four fiscal items on the agenda. For your consideration, 9A, List of Bills, 9B, Treasurer's Report, 9C, Budgetary Transfers, and 9D, Chester County Intermediate Unit Contract. Approve the contract with end terms with Chester County Intermediate Unit for reading specialist services, beginning December 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027, at a rate based on CCIU's collective bargaining agreement.
Are there any questions from members of the board? Ms. Deal?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if the administration could speak to a little bit more information about this, this contract. The way that I understand it, it has a direct relationship and impact to some of the board goals, being MTSS and our work with Schools Cubed, which is related to the board goals. So I just wanted to know if you could speak to how this aligns with our work with MTSS and the work with Schools Cubed.
Yeah, I think, thanks for the question, Ms. Deal. So the item certainly is a critical item for approval for next week. But, but the work on our MTSS process is ultimately what's going to dictate the level of interventions that we have in our district. As you all know, we're working with Patty Montgomery with Schools Cubed, and he's the literacy. And there's a number of areas of focus around literacy. And one of those areas naturally is to review the interventions, which is where Wilson falls into play. Fortunately, Patty is going to be joining us at Ed Committee in February, and she's going to be sharing with us some of our core literacy instruction, going over our intervention process and talking about the literacy interventions that we have in place and those that we need to invest in in the future. So that should all tie in really nicely with what we're looking at in our MTSS goals. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Alston?
Yes, I just was wondering, the, I'm, I'm fine with this. I just was wondering about the, the overall financial impact to the district with this contract. Is this replacing other services that we're currently, currently using? Or is this additional services that we're requesting?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be, it's, it's replacing services, but it's going to be added an additional cost. And do we know what that is? Dr. Regina?
I don't have the additional cost in front of me, but I do know the ultimate cost of it compared to what the original was. So I know that the ultimate cost is going to be around $530,000 approximately for, to go into this contract with the CCIU.
Any other questions? Ms. Chanda?
We're, so we're using Schools Cubed as a consultant. Did they provide their input on this?
They, they did. And so I think probably the larger conversation is they recognize that many of these services we currently provide are students. But over time, the idea is to look at the interventions that we could be bringing into the district that may either replace or continue to do Wilson. And that is determined on a case-by-case basis. But, but we do meet with Patty Montgomery on these issues specifically. She actually meets with us, meets with us twice a month to kind of go through some of the interventions and her core instruction, along with our lab school work. So yes, they were consulted on this, and they recognize that we have to go through with this next step before we start to do a deeper dive into our MTSS process.
Okay. And then my other question, sorry, I had to look it up. House Bill 684, I think, was passed, right? Yes, I think it was passed. And that specifically talks about the science of reading. So will this set us up for meeting those requirements when they come down?
Yes, it's all intertwined. So Wilson is kind of, as we talk, the gold standard, right? In, in terms of that, but it doesn't mean that it's always the intervention that you should be going with, which I think is the investigation in our MTSS process that's going to be so valuable over these next few months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Perdue?
I just have a question. Maybe I missed it. Do we have the contract with the amounts provided already?
We had, the contracts attached to the, the motion. It does not list out the exact amounts, because it's going to depend on the, where the four individuals are placed on the Chester County Intermediate Unit's salary schedule. But we have an estimate, as, as Dr. Regina previously mentioned.
And then in reference to the term, it's through June 2027. Can you just elaborate on the timeline?
Certainly. So one of the things that we naturally wanted to investigate, and we were, we were very forthcoming with the information as we were discussing this with the employees that are currently working with us with Wilson. As we're going through the MTSS process, there could be a titration of services potentially in the future or still utilizing the same staff. And so, but we also recognize as the CCIU brings on new people, they need to have a commitment of some level. And so the initial request was three years, and the district had negotiated that, that down to a year and a half. So we're able to make some of those timely decisions a little bit more quickly if we need to.
Thank you.
Ms. Cancro?
Just for summary, though, the reason why we're going to that is because we had multiple vendors, right? How many would you, did we talk about that summary, just of why we're going to this and funneling it to one? I think it's key for.
Sure. It, it is important. And so naturally, we have, we have independent contractors that are working through this. And, and you essentially have two options. Where your options are to employ individuals to be able to do that or outsource them. And as you look to employ individuals, if you are ever going to titrate services, you don't want to ever have to furlough individuals and go through that process. So it's very comfortable to be able to look at outsourcing as a potential if you need to. But I think that ultimately is why we had decided to go down this path, to be able to make those next steps.
Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I, I, I guess, so I guess my first question is, this did not come to finance. So did it go through Education Committee?
It did not.
So maybe you can explain then to me why we're doing this? And I know that sounds like a really basic question, but like, I just didn't get it.
So the services that we provide could not be stopped in terms of Wilson. We're currently providing them to approximately 80 students in the district. It is embedded in many plans that we have in the district. And so again, there were essentially two paths that we can explore. One is hiring the individuals or outsourcing work for, for those specifically. And those are the two paths that we conduct as a district whenever we look at employment opportunities. And so that was kind of the decision point. We had to do one of those two matters. Wasn't necessarily an education item for that specific decision. The education item is really what Patty's going to be speaking to us about in February, which is if we're able to titrate off of the Wilson services potentially, what are the other interventions that we should be investigating as part of our MTSS process? That's, that's the critical discussion in MT, of the MTSS process and with the interventions and why we're exploring that in February. But that's, that's kind of the, the answer to the question on why it didn't come to Ed Committee.
So what's the increasing cost to the district?
I do not have the increase in front of me. I only had the, the base number, yeah.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, why is the cost increasing? Are we getting more services? Are we getting more reading specialists? Like, are we getting more hours of support? Like, what is it that's driving the cost? Because it is an increased cost.
It is. That is correct.
But we don't really, I don't really know why it's an increased cost.
It's, it's the employment through the CCIU that is increasing the cost as opposed to the independent contractors that currently exist.
So we go through the CCIU, we no longer have these individuals as, as independent contractors. So now we're locked in for an 18-month contract, and it's costing the district more money. So I'm going to ask one more time, because maybe I'm just not getting it. But what's the benefit to doing this through the CCIU versus independent contractors for less cost and whose contracts we can end pretty much whatever we agree to in the contract?
In the, in the Friday memo, I outlined the rationale in two parts for this particular matter. I can share that in that, as Dr. Regina mentioned, if we brought them on as employees of the district, it would be, it would be about $6,000 less than having them employed by the CCIU. As Dr. Regina previously also mentioned, that the goal in working with Patty Montgomery and the Schools Cube folks is to leverage other resources as part of the MTSS process and in, in place of Wilson in the future as part of an overall titration process. So the value is, while it's, it's technically going to be a $6,000 increase for us to go to CCIU, the value is that in, in 18 months, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to, typically what you would do with an employee is you would have, you would have to furlough them from the organization. And we would have, we can, we can avoid that process by contracting with the CCIU.
But if they're contractors, they're not employees. If they're not employees, then we don't have to furlough them. So are they contractors or not currently?
Currently, they're contractors. At this moment, the, the recommendation on the table is to make them employees of the CCIU, because otherwise we would be making them an employee of the district.
Okay. I'm just going to ask that maybe we want to hold off on this decision, because I'd like to potentially get a little bit more of the financial information. And I don't know if maybe we could provide that in advance of next week's meeting.
I think all the finance information was provided in the, in the Friday memo. I'd be glad to share that with anybody and have that, again, or have a conversation with you on the matter.
I, I did see the information provided in the Friday memo, and there were some gaps in that information that are still gaps to me, that I'm not, that are not clear as to how this differential is, is helping the district.
And I would, I would be more than, I'd be more than happy to meet with you and go through that with you if, if you'd like. Or I could have Dr. Regina do that, yeah.
Can I just ask a follow-up question, just because maybe, I guess because it didn't go to Ed Committee, and I, I agree it makes sense that it didn't come to Ed Committee, just based on the nature of it and the finance, they not see it. Is there, as Ms. Graff requested, what is the impact to delaying this? And I'm assuming if there's no, there's no work session or a meeting in December, delaying this to January timeline, what is the impact? Just because I know you have the timeline here to start in December. So what is the impact to providing the requested information or clarification as requested in waiting on this?
I think it's important to understand that it is important for us to make this decision so that we can continue the services as, as prescribed. The risk of not doing this would mean that we could have students who have IUPs that require Wilson reading to not have the teachers in front of them. And that, that's our biggest concern. And that then would return into a comp ed potential, potential challenge. But I, but I'm more than happy to gather whatever other information is needed. I want to make sure that members of the board are as informed as they possibly can be before rendering a decision. I, I would just ask that you ask me what it is that, that you need. I'd be glad to meet with you. I'd be glad to provide that information in advance of, of next Tuesday's meeting. If in fact, there's still more information to be needed, then at that time, I would suggest that, you know, the, the board could choose to, you know, table the matter or to, to put it onto another, you know, you know, push it out to a future determination.
And that's fine. I'm just asking, just because maybe Ms. Graff, if you can just share what your concerns or the gaps are that based on what was provided in the Friday memo with Dr. Zerbi. Just so maybe next week, we can have, we can have the formation provided, well, provided ahead, ahead of time before the next week's meeting to make sure we have agreement on this, just because if then you're aware of the impact that it have on our students, so.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the impact on students. I guess my, my one question is, does the, when does the current contract that these contracted employees have end? Because are we saying it ends?
It's up.
So how, when did it end?
That's why this date is critical. So currently, right now, this contract would have to go through for them to continue services.
Okay. So I guess my question then is, maybe I, maybe I, maybe my concern is really, why are we getting this information without the financial details coming through the Finance Committee in advance of the work session? So maybe that's my overarching concern. I, I don't, I get that we have to continue services for our students, and I would never want to stop those services, just so we're clear. But I do have concerns about the board being given this information on Monday at 11:00 a.m. and being expected to understand what's happening for Tuesday or Wednesday and Tuesday meeting, and we're going to vote on this next week. I feel like there's a lot, this just came up on Friday, was the first time I saw it. And I, I'm not sure that I, I still really understand the details of what we're paying for. And, you know, we're talking about decisions that are going to now be in place for 18 months. Is there an option for us to do a 12-month? Is there an option to do six months? I mean, these are all the questions.
I own professional knowledge with that one. And the other thing that I do want to echo off of what Ms. Graff has shared is I think that I am looking forward to the conversation in February. I think that there is a larger conversation of why we received this on, in a memo on Friday, and we're turning around with some gaps in some conversation, and it's, you know, up, and we need to vote on it. And so I think the conversation in Ed Committee that is going to be happening in February, did I say Friday? I'm sorry, in February. I, I think that that's starting to get, that, that is going to focus on some of the structures and systems, hopefully to support the district in addressing some that created this, I, I suspect. So.
Ms. Alston?
Thank you. I have two questions. One is maybe an easy clarifying one, that the teachers who are providing these services to our students will remain the teachers through the contract, or are we, are there different teachers coming on?
They'll all be the same ones.
The same ones. Okay, thank you. That was one question. And then the other question is, given the, I guess, lack of a total in this contract, could we add, if we have that number, like a not to exceed for the contract amount, just so we can have a sense of, of the financial impact? I, I, it was sort of what I was trying to ask before, and then Ms. Perdue also hit on that a little bit. But is, would it be possible to have a not to exceed added to this motion?
We can look at the estimates and, and provide one. Any other questions on the matter to my left, to my right? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Then we'll move on to personnel items. Dr. Sergini?
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Zerbi. The personnel items for consideration this month include the following. One, employment classified, Michelle Lee, paraprofessional at Arrowhead. We look forward to welcoming Michelle to the Methacton family. There are two uncompensated leaves, professional, Jennifer Toscano, kindergarten instructor at Arrowhead, and Devon Thomas, special education instructor at Warsester, both of the dates listed. Two uncompensated leaves classified, Jennifer Maturski, secretary to the assistant principals at the high school, and Tanya Jones, paraprofessional at Skyview, both of the dates listed. at the high school, and Tanya Jones, paraprofessional at Sky U, both of the dates listed. There are supplemental contracts for course at Arcola and the curriculum instruction and assessment and pupil services departments. There are two additions to the classified substitute list, Benjamin Miller and Salvatore Terranova, both custodial casuals on call. We look forward to welcoming Ben and Sal. And one, community education hire Ocean Yarn, lifeguard swim instructor. We thank Ocean for taking on this role, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Are there any comments or questions for Dr. Sergini to my left? Seeing none to my right. Thank you, Dr. Sergini. We'll move on to curriculum and programs. Dr. Regina?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Zerby. Just one item this evening for the graduation requirement as presented by Dr. Gorla, and that is to approve the graduation requirements, starting with the class of 2030 as presented. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Regina on that? Ms. Alston?
Just maybe this is obvious, but if it's starting with the class of 2030, is this then implemented next year to then offer up, like, for the four years for everybody?
For the current freshmen, yes, exactly.
Thank you.
And just, I know Ms. Gorla presented at committee and talked about this, but I know there's a communication plan to go out, she may have mentioned it briefly, but a communication plan to go out to those students that will be impacted and their parents also, right?
Yep.
Any other questions on curriculum and programs? Seeing none. Policy, Dr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. For first reading, really just general updates except for policy 202, which is out of cycle, which really is some legal updates to the notice and hearing process for the expulsion of non-resident students that had to be updated. For second reading, again, items that we discussed last month, no major changes. And then one, intent to repeal, which is the state mandate waivers policy, 825. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Dr. Regina on policy matters to my right? Seeing none to my left? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Regina. Then on to other, we have gifts and donations. We have approved a generous gift from the Van Nuys Family Charitable Fund to support Mathacton High School Field Hockey in the amount of $4,000. Approve a generous gift from the Van Nuys Family Charitable Fund for the Mathacton High School Girls Soccer Team in the amount of $4,000. Approve the gift from the Van Nuys Family Charitable Fund to support the Mathacton Girls Track Team in the amount of $4,000. And four, approve the generous gift of the Van Nuys Charitable Fund to support Mathacton High School Girls Cross Team in the amount of $4,000. Item five is to approve the generous gift from the Black Run Giving Fund for, I think that's supposed to be PBIS, we'll make that correction. At Eagleville, on the amount of $200. Six is approve the generous gift from residents of Shenandoah Community Supply Woodland Nurses' Suite with identified student items in the amount of $390. Item seven, approve the generous gift from residents of Shenandoah Community to supply Eagleville Nurses' Suite with identified student items in the amount of $390. Eight, approve the generous gift of Lower Providence Township of a 2014 Ford Interceptor sedan to be utilized by the Mathacton School District's Chief of Police valued at $10,000. I'll just stop there for a second and see if Dr. Sergini wants to, you know, make any further comments on that one.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. With the addition of the chief of police position and also the increase in the number of armed officers in the district and the desire to have them be mobile, we recognized as part of this process that we would need to also purchase a vehicle. Lower Providence Township has offered to partner with us. If you recall during the presentations about the chief position, they had already offered to partner with us with the addition of a police radio for the chief of police to be able to communicate on the law enforcement band. The Lower Providence Township supervisors have gone a step further and taken a vote to donate a vehicle to be utilized by the chief of police. Lower Providence Township does have a cycle whereby they cycle out their police fleet, and they have offered to donate a 2014 police interceptor that is decommissioned from the fleet, but a fully functional law enforcement vehicle. And that will allow the chief of police to utilize a police vehicle with lights and sirens and be fully mobile. That eliminates the need for the district to purchase a vehicle. The only thing that we will have to do is pay for the transfer of the title and then also have the markings on the vehicle changed from Lower Providence Township to Mathacton School District.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Item nine, approve the generous gift of anonymous donor to support the high school students lunch balances in the amount of $100. And the last one is approve the generous gift from former Scribry teacher Catherine Mann in honor of her parents Leo and Lori Gladnick to the backpack program in the amount of $250. In terms of trips, we have approved the high school wrestling team to participate in the tournament from December 29th through 30th of 2025, Jim Thorpe. And transportation is to approve the roster for the 25, 26-year, if we add additional drivers, which I don't see any listed there, so we will just remove that if we don't get any additional drivers. That ends the agenda. I'll turn it back over to you, Madam President.
Did we have any questions, Mrs. Perdue?
I just have a quick one on item nine in reference to the donation to support high school students lunch balances. When we get donations like that, how is it managed as far as the decision on, I guess, what lunch account balance is supporting or how is it implemented? It's just a clarification question.
So typically what we do with those donations is we have students throughout the year that go from a paid status to a free and reduced status. And they may, a lot of those students often carry balances. So when we get donations like that, the first thing that we do with them is we use them to clear the balances for the students that are on the free and reduced lunch program.
Do parents have to put in a request for that or is that something that is done automatically?
We do it automatically.
Okay. And then the parents are notified that, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on item number eight. In the Friday memo, it was identified that this was a three-year-old vehicle. Is it really a 2014?
It is a 2014 vehicle. It has 78,000 miles on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, yes, Ms. Alston. I just want to comment on what a lot of wonderful gifts we have from the community to our school district and to thank these community members who have given these gifts to us. I do agree. It's great to see. Much appreciated. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none. The next one is dates for board members and calendars. There are two more dates existing for November 25th, a regular board meeting, and then December 1st for the reorganization board meeting here at the high school. Anything for old business or new business? Right. Seeing none. We'll move to courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments, and please submit questions via email to information@mathacton.org.
Jim Malik, Worcester. The 2025 U.S. News and World Report rankings came in. Your best school in the district is the high school at 76, as it sits, no renovation, nothing. Your worst school, Eagle or Arrowhead, 861, brand-new school. Can somebody explain that? The oldest school that you guys want to knock down when renovate is your best ranked school and the brand-new school is the worst? Somebody needs to look at that. I handed you the five-year budget projection from a year ago, and maybe somebody can explain to me what's going on because without the $100 million borrowing, projected tax increases were 1.4% in '25, '26, 2.3, 1.2, 1.1. You guys raised taxes 5% last year, if I remember correctly. How's this off by 3.6%? And the rest of them, without the $100 million borrowing, is you're down there 1%. Maybe somebody could take a look at that, analyze it, and let me know what you come up with. And also important to note there is the projected tax increase on the borrowing alone for '27, '28 was $150. You guys project zero. So a lot of stuff is not making sense. As far as the assessed value situation, you're acting like Mathacton or Lower Providence and Worcester are the same. They're not. The average assessed value in Worcester is $220,000. Whole different ballgame. So what you need to do is analyze Worcester and analyze Lower Providence. Worcester, we're being overtaxed and we're putting in more money than Lower Providence per household because of the value of the properties. So you can't just sit there and go, oh, it's 176. Oh, it's good. It's not good. Looking at Ms. Steffi's presentation, you have projected annual real estate tax bill, and then over that, you have amount of increase attributable to increase in debt service. Well, if you look at your own numbers, your debt service in 2028 is going down to 5.5 million. The debt service in '29 is going to 4.9 million. That's a difference of $4 and $5 million that we're paying, we'd have to pay extra. That's on your sheet. But you're assuming that, well, it's going to make it up to 9.8 and it's going to be the same. It's not the same. You're going from $4 million, $4, $5 million to $5 million to $9 million. That's a $4 and $5 million increase, so very deceptive.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. We might be getting winter early this year. We had sleet this afternoon rather than the forecast rain. And speaking of forecasts, we have Ms. Steffi's presentation that was given out at the Finance Committee meeting. The first chart that she showed, you can read that with a microscope rather than a magnifying glass, as one or two of the directors already pointed out. Whereas this, an 80% enlargement, uses all the paper and is readable. If anyone were to take a course in PowerPoint, they'd learn that Microsoft intentions were that it result in a readable presentation. Of course, this is in color, and color really helps. And overall, what Ms. Steffi has given you is the maximum hit that you can have in terms of meeting the annual Act One index limit. And reality is something different. And for instance, people who are aware that there's going to be five or six or 10 years of maximum taxes for homeowners in the district, that's not good. It has no cushion for the school district and you need to look at the intended implementation. And in that regard, I think that continuing use of the existing pool saves quite a bit of money without hardship to the students. Also, the plans call for a new classroom wing, whereas the enrollment projections for the next decade for Mathacton are flat. So I think that the number of new classrooms needs to be curtailed in a way that would allow added classrooms in the future, but saves money. I think spending $120 or $125 million
Thank you very much.
is not wise. And one of these Steffi charts, just to finish up, shows borrowing of, I think, $125 million and total cost, including interest, of, I think, $350 million.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments or questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn? I see Ms. Alston and Ms. Steele. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.